Hello, hello, hello? Is this on? Okay, I can hear. Thank you all so much for attending this evening. And we will, before we call the meeting to order, we will begin with the public comments on the agenda items. So it'll be just a little bit, you all, before we do, before we start with the color guard and invocation and presentation of colors. Okay. So on that list, there are one, two, three, four, five, five people and one quick presentation. So we will start with Mrs. Joanie Robinson, who is here to speak on item number five and to speak against.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So August 18th, my mom received a letter about the grass at a family property needs to be cut. And if it's not cut within seven days, it'll be added to a list. So she paid to get the grass cut. And then we received a letter in September saying that we owe $4,000 and some dollars for demolition that will be at the next council meeting. So she calls me and I call Mr. Lockett, who's over code enforcement, to request the file, to make sure, you know, everything was mailed out. Maybe something was missed. So I get the file and it has a letter, the one that was sent. Y'all have to go with me, okay? And I can repeat any dates for you. But the letter that was sent August 18th was actually written June 2nd. And the June 2nd letter was the one saying it needs to be addressed within seven days. And with the June 2nd letter, you have the certified mail that shows the August timestamp. And it also has an affidavit. And with code enforcement, they do an affidavit where it says that we're sending this letter out on this day by 6 o'clock PM, which means it would have been sent out on June 2nd, 2025. But we didn't receive it to August 18th. So I was like, that's pretty high for grass and weed. So when I requested the file, you have the invoice in here. And mind you, for a number of registered letters sent, it says zero. And the part of the ordinance, I think, is 16 something C. Two and, or three and five says you have to send a certify and you have to send an affidavit. And then we get, so the second letter that was mailed in September, it says for residential grass for $4,997.94. And according to the file that I received from code enforcement, the property was demoed on August 13th. And during the meeting, I said, our letter doesn't even say demolition. And Mr. Lockett with code enforcement, he stated that junk in the grass and weed also means demolition. But if that's so, on the invoice for payment, you have three different categories. The first one has grass weed drunk, uh, junk. The second one has demolition, tree removal. And the third one has boarded up and other. The X is by the grass weed and junk and it's not by demolition. So this is what I presented to Development and Planning as chaired by Councilmember Fells. So Mr. Lockett responded that the original notice was sent to a P.O. box on file. And I said, well, we didn't have any documentation that showed a P.O. box in our folder. And he told them that he would be able to find it. So along with my other complaints, my next one is, why wasn't that in the file that I requested originally? That would have given me some more context. So this morning, I want to say Councilmember Fells sent me an email with this letter that was drafted November 2023. And it didn't have an affidavit with it. It did not have a certified receipt with it. Councilmember Fells just sent me a picture like three seconds ago. And it had, uh, I guess, an address on a certified letter, but it has no address or anything on it. And so I don't think the proper process was done for due process, according to you all's ordinances and the state ordinances when it comes to raising and removing a structure. And even if you look at the invoice, it doesn't have the fees on there. It doesn't even have a permit for demolition on there. And yet you're charging someone $4,997 when we only have record of them getting a notice in August, the date after the property was demoed with a letter that was dated June 2nd. And I'm here to request that this particular address is taken off the list. And I'm also here to just say, from my experience with city government and being on the council, code enforcement has always had these discrepancies. And they got one job, and that is to document the things properly. They're not tearing the houses down. They're supposed to take pictures. They're supposed to document the dates. And that way, the city can recoup the money that they're spending on these contractors. And it can be a smooth process so that you don't get a bunch of people together complaining about the process to tear down houses and the city not recouping their funds. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Robinson, so you said, so that property is on the list that we have now?
Yes.
Okay.
1120 Florida.
The legal description is on that.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Fells.
So yes, I have been in communication with.
Talk through the mic.
I have been in communication with Ms. Robinson, the City Attorney's Office, as well as code enforcement. And I did, like Ms. Robinson said, a few minutes before the meeting, I received a document showing where it was sent by certified mail. But that photograph, that documentation, it doesn't list like the dates and everything. And I believe there's supposed to be like a green card attached to it. So it would be my recommendation that we remove this one from the list, just so, to give us time to produce further documentation if we have it.
What's the item number on the list? Because I'm looking for.
Yeah. It's item number five. Look on page 15. And, yep. And it's line 16. It starts with line 16.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Here, okay.
Number five?
Item five, agenda item number five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, page 15.
Page 15, yes. It's item, and on that, it's item number 16, I guess.
Right. And this, and I just want to, you know, clarify. I do think that, you know, overall, code enforcement, they do a pretty good job. This isn't saying that they don't have the documentation. But I do understand where Ms. Robinson is coming from, that we should be able to produce it. So I would like to give the code enforcement office a little bit more time to produce some of the documents that we're looking for.
And also encourage them that if it's demolition, you can't put the invoices residential grass, you know, just to have everything decent and in order.
And I'm just a little concerned about the difference of dates that she gave.
Because you said that you, they sent it out on June, what was it, 18? I'm sorry, June 2nd. You got it on August 18th?
But they didn't send it June 2nd, but that's where it was dated. And they also have an affidavit that is saying, and it's attested by Lockett as a notary. And it's saying that we're going to send it out on this date by 6 o'clock PM. And it wasn't sent on that day.
Okay. And that's, and you received it on 18th August?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, you know.
With the certified mail?
Yeah, I have the letter that came in, the 18th, August 18th. And I have the letter. And if you all want copies, Councilmember Fells has copies. I left a second copy. I don't know if it's at the City Attorney's Office.
I think we're going to be fine.
And I do want to clarify. Now, we do have the certified mail showing where, like, of this year, where that mail was sent by certified mail, I believe, to the Regalia address. But the issue of contention right now is that in 2023, when code enforcement sent out the notice saying we're going to demolish the structure, we need to see the proof that that was sent via certified mail to the P.O. box. So that's what we're looking for from code enforcement.
Okay. And that's in the meantime, we'll, you know, take that recommendation to remove it.
And that's one part of it. And I agree, you know, it takes some time to figure out if they sent it out correctly. But also, just that June 2nd, and you're telling somebody seven days for grass and weeds. They cut the lot for grass and weeds. And then September, you get a letter saying, okay, you're about to have a lien on your property if you don't pay almost $5,000. It's a lot of parts to this that I think they need to address internally.
Is the, and I just have a question. Is the $5,000 certain that accumulated since 2023? Or is this something new? I mean, I'm just trying to.
No, this is from the demo, the 5,000. And the only thing added on it, so the demo, the cost that was paid by city to contractor to correct nuisance condition was 4,950. So the rest of the things outside of that was processing costs and documentation of costs. This doesn't even include the letters and photograph of properties, too.
So you cut the grass after that letter. But then the next letter you got, well, didn't get, was for the demo.
Yes. And we were thinking the letter was just for grass cutting. So just pay somebody to cut it, because that's what the letter stated.
Okay.
Grass weed and junk.
Okay. Okay. Well, I know that Councilmember Fells and his committee are going to look at it and try to get everything sorted out. But for tonight, we'll definitely pull it.
Okay. Thank you all for your time.
Mrs. Robinson, I would like to thank you for bringing this to our attention, because I happen to have been at that meeting, the committee meeting. And we took notes, and I think this is the appropriate action. But my point is that we will definitely look at this internally to make sure we address whatever issues led to these issues.
I appreciate it. And you all have a busy agenda. Thank you for allowing me to go first.
Absolutely. Councilmember Bronson.
I just had one comment. So you said it had junk, the junk, the price is, the junk is included in the price. Because it wasn't demolished, the house.
It was.
It was. The house was demolished, okay.
Yes, but it's not documented as if it was demolished. It's documented as grass weed and junk.
Okay, so it was demolished.
Yes.
And then my other last concern is.
Councilmember.
I apologize.
That's okay.
My last concern is that a letter was dated in June, but it was sent out on August. And something has to be done, because if you write up a letter in June, I could see maybe one or two days before it go out, especially if it's a Friday on the weekend. But that whole from June to August, that's a long time.
And to your point, not only is the letter dated June, there's an affidavit that's stated and stamped by notary republic, notary saying, the envelope plainly addressed as shown with postage fully paid at Pine Bluff for 6:00 PM on the second day of June 2025. And there is no postage for June, March, April, May. So.
Councilmember Fells?
Never mind.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Councilmember Mays?
Hey. Is there any way we can help? Yeah?
Is that another item of the same issue? The same item?
Yeah, we're going to do that. We're going to do that.
But you got the youngsters.
We're going to do that. We got it. Thank you. Councilmember, so we're good?
I'm not good with it, but they waiting. They got to.
Well, we have a process and I understand.
I understand.
Okay.
It's getting late and the kids got to go home. Okay, go ahead. Do what y'all do.
Director Lockett, the only question I have, and we can go over some of the issues for Mrs. Robinson's case. But the only other thing I was looking at, I mean, there's several pages that the council will be dealing with. Out of all of those pages, on page four, there's another item, number 10, where the amount is for $2,472.94. Can you tell us what that was for?
Number 10?
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and executed memorandum on this is what I have. I don't have what you have.
I don't think he has the motion.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. Would that necessarily be for demolition?
There had to be a demolition.
Demolition?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Okay. And next, we have Kathleen and Ricky Walters to speak on item number five against. Looks like going once, twice, three times. Kathleen and Ricky, oh, that was pulled down. Yes. Okay. Julius Lever?
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Yes, on the number five, I just want to say that I understand that there are properties that have been in disrepair. And I think I told you before, years ago, and I remember very, you know, very well, there were three or four or five building materials places in the city. You could call, go to the owner and say, hey, look here, I got a new baby. I need to add on to my house. He said, oh, John, go get what you need. You need to build a floor? Yeah, I do. Go get what you need and they'll deliver it for you this evening. You'd have to pay a penny. But when loads took over in that capacity, it's not easy to repair, to restore, or to maintain your home. Now, Mr., there's a gentleman, I will call his name, but there's a gentleman in this audience today that has bought 400 pieces of property. And he invested his own money, hardworking money, in those pieces of property. Now, some say he would be called a speculator. Someone wants to come to a city and buy property at distressed prices. But I want to remind you that many people across the nation has done the same thing. Years ago, I went to real estate school and I got a real estate license. I went to auctioneering school and I got an auctioneer's license. So if I wanted to auction cars or sell cars or rent cars or buy property, sell property, rent property, lease property, maintain property, I could. And I worked for a company that a professor at U of U P B owned. It was on State Street by five blocks from you. He was an appraisal. He had almost an appraise on every house in the city of Pine Bluff, because he had been doing it for such a long time. So if someone bought a house, he'd just go to his file and get the old appraisal and work it in that regard, and there'd be a new appraisal. So when I was doing that, many people called that real estate company and asked me, because I was the lone person answering the phone, because he was a professor at U of U P B, what property do you have in Pine Bluff? Do y'all have any listings? So there was a word for a long time that property in Pine Bluff was at distressed prices. And as you know, Pine Bluff is named Pine Bluff because of pine trees. Pine trees are hard to some degree. I won't say they're hard, but they grow straight. Pine trees grow straight. So lumber was plentiful in this area. And there were a lot of nice houses. And one day, a man was cutting grass for me, and he also tore down houses. I said, you know what? There's a lot of houses being torn down here that I don't think need to be torn down. He said, I tear down houses every day in Pine Bluff that don't need to be torn down. Because there was a law in the books that said that if your house was accessible, you could condemn it. And so when a person leave town, someone break in their window, it's accessible. They come from Chicago, from another city, and they put boards around the doors. And it's okay until fall time.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr..
Yes, I'll be saying.
Done two and a half, so she could close.
Yes, I will say.
Thank you so much.
I could go on about this, but I'll say this. I believe in my heart that this man that owned 400 pieces of property, if the church community could recognize that these are homes in your community, these are homes down the street from your church. The members don't go to your church now. They move sometimes farther away. But their grandmothers own that piece of property. And some of them clean people's houses for $7, $8 a week and pay for those houses with that kind of income. And it's a shame to let those houses go wasted. And if they are going wasted and a man comes and buy them, I think if we offer him $1,000 a piece for 400 houses, I believe we'll sell them. That's my opinion. So if we can get the churches to recognize how important it is to save these properties for these young men that have gone astray, that might come back home and need land to build a house on, even if it's a tiny home. So I'm just saying, suggesting that we make a certain kind of dialogue with the church community and ask them to help us to preserve the property in this city, in this county, for the descendants of those who worked so hard to pay for it many years ago. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much. Okay. Mr. Finley? And if I could say before you begin, the last time you were here, it resulted in your removal because of how you presented. And I just would ask for you to respect this council and the process and the space that you're in, please. Thank you so much.
My name is John Finley. I'm against this ordinance, this resolution. It doesn't hurt the right people. It hurts people that are trying to make it. I hope that I see on the resolution list, on the agenda, that you're going to work with a community organization that helps with, what was it? This Center for Community Progress. I looked through their resources. They have some really good resources. I think that's a really good thing. I think that you might listen now that somebody else has an issue with perjury occurring in code enforcement. I hope you do. I think there are some good things happening here. Code enforcement is the worst thing about this city.
And then finally, Mr. Jahad Mohammed, who would like to speak for item one and his four.
How you all doing?
Doing well.
All right, all right. I'm Brother Jahad Mohammed. I'm here to make my sentiments known that I am absolutely 100% for item number one that would be read on its first reading today. I think that urban renewal has ran its course, has served whatever purpose it served, and I think it's time to move on. I will bring you all's attention to what I've said before. When I reached out to the finance director last year and asked about the reconciliation of the funds in terms of how much money was on the books, how many projects were unfinished, what the timeline looked like, I didn't get good answers. And I came back and reported that to you all. And so sometime, when things don't add up in terms of the money, in terms of progress, and we're constantly mending our money, but we're not getting a return, I think with those entities, it's time to turn the page. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mohammed. Councilmember Mays?
I agree with you. Urban renewal is to pack up, man, and lead our city. I agree.
Thank you so much. And now, I will call the meeting to order. And we can all please stand so we can hear the invocation, presentation of colors, and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Silas Vincent Johnson of Full Council Ministries.
All right. I want to thank you all for the honor and the invitation inviting me. Good to see Mayor Flowers. And Ms. Roberts is always so sweet to everybody and some of the council people I've known for a while now. And I want to thank you all for the work that you have done in this city. And the state really does appreciate you. Let us pray. Father, I thank you for your word, and I thank you for this opportunity. Your word says, how sweet it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. This is where you command the blessing. And so, God, I thank you right now that by your spirit, that you remind us of your word, that honor is followed after humility. And so, Father, I thank you that as we come together in agreeing concerning things in this community, Father, that we'll come up with the wise answers, not only for this generation, but for generations to come. And so I speak a special blessing upon every council member, upon everybody that's present tonight, and upon everyone in this precious city, Pine Bluff. Have your way. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. And next, we will hear the, I'm sorry, Pine Bluff High School Air Force Junior ROTC will present the colors, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry.
Left, march. Color, home.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Freezing, arms. Order, arms. Right about, march. Forward, march.
Thank you so much, Pine Bluff High School Air Force Junior ROTC. Well, we were trying to briefly hear from Ms. Okay. So we are trying to recognize someone who was going to speak. Also, we didn't know she was in the waiting room to speak on one of the agenda items as well. And as soon as we can pull that up, we will go ahead and indulge her. And in the meantime, we'll go ahead and get started. And, because I think she has another 30 minutes. She had a hard stop at 6:30, correct? Okay.
She's a consultant.
Right. From list. So we'll go ahead and try to pull her out of the waiting room and move forward. So next, we will ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lockett?
Here.
Councilmember Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Brunson?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Fells?
Here.
Okay. Eight present. And then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November 3rd, 2025.
So moved second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from November 3rd, 2025. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those who vote for the approval of November 3rd, 2025 minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes. And now, we will commence with the committee reports. Councilmember Brown, will you please deliver your report on Ways and Means?
Yes, Mayor. Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. We went over five different items. One of them then was Agenda Item Number 15. It was sent to the full council with a due pass. Agenda Item Number 16 was sent to the council with a due pass. And also, a potential Agenda Item Number 17, which hasn't been put on the agenda yet, but it was also sent to the council with a due pass. Also, we had an ordinance for the levy of a 1% sales and use tax within the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, for a period of 10 years, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. It was sent to the council with a do not pass recommendation, and also an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, on the question of levying a new 1% sales and use tax within the city of Pine Bluff, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, also with a do not pass to the full council. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And then ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver your report?
Yes, Mayor. Agenda Items Number 1 and 2 are up for the first reading. Number 3 has been pulled by the sponsor. Number 4 is up for the first reading. Number 5, 6, Agenda Items Number 5 through 16 are all resolutions. They will be completed on tonight. All of you should have in front of you a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to reallocate funds within the Code Enforcement Department. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you so much.
Oh, a second.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, it's been moved-
This is to add Agenda Item Number 17.
Oh, thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded that the council adopt Agenda Item Number 17. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
Eight.
The next Agenda Item and Resolution, congratulations, Dr. Tamara T. Glover for being crowned Mrs. USA International Global 2025-26 at the USA World Pageant in New Orleans, Louisiana, committing her for a life of faith and service to women, and wishing her good luck and happy outcome in the International Global Pageant to be held in September 2026 in Malaysia. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we add Item Number 18 to the full council agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the vote. Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
It was discussed if we voted on this one first?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And next, we still, okay, and next, we will begin to review and vote on the proposed ordinances. I'm sorry? Did I miss the committee? I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so we will review or hear Item Number 18 when we start that process, and now we will finish the committee reports. And so, that concludes your report. Councilmember Holcomb, thank you. And next, Councilmember Frazier, will you please deliver your report on economic and community development?
Thank you, Mayor. We have not met since the last city council meeting. However, I would like to thank all of the citizens who supported the Veterans Movie Night on Friday. It was a success. We had over 65 in attendance, and we had Vietnam vets up in there. And so, I'm so grateful for everyone that supported it. Thank you to all of our sponsors and donors that supported the event. Also, this Friday will be our regularly scheduled movie night. Nothing is Impossible is showing us a basketball movie. If you liked Facing the Giants, you definitely going to like this one too. So, come on out. It is free. All you have to do is RSVP at 870-575-3619. And I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you again to everyone. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have Councilmember Denton. Will you please report on the Public Health and Welfare Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Welfare has not met since our last meeting, and I will give with the Clerk's office to schedule for the December meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And next, Councilmember Lockett, will you please report on the Public Works Committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on October the 10th at 11:02. We were presented with a list of items that Mr. Dockett, our Street Department Director, presented to us. Of those items, the list came to about $1.3 million, Mayor, but we settled on approving or requesting documentation, which is in Item Number 15, for a street repair machine that does asphalt work. So, that was reviewed by our committee, and I requested that he give with the mayor and the finance director and present the necessary documents that would allow us to procure this piece of equipment that pretty much just does sectional repairs to our streets. Ms. Holloman, our Park and Rec Director, she gave us, she said, basically, everything's going to parks. And they are looking into the pumping system at the J.C.'s golf course. The 30 Main, they're looking at a ribbon cutting for that project. Mr. Matthews went on to give us some other updates. The streetscape is about 85% done. I think they're looking for a few things to be done there. The Barracuda Street project is 100% done. The Martin Luther King Park improvements are 100% done. And that was our update on the park projects. Now, Madam City Clerk gave us an update that the, one of the members of the Golf Advisory Committee, Ms. Sharon Alexander, avid golfer, she had passed away. So, we give our condolences to her family and really thank her for all the work that she did on our Golf Advisory Committee. And Madam Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you so much. And next, we have Councilmember Fells. Will you please deliver your committee report on development and planning?
Yes, so the Development and Planning Committee met on November the 7. We reviewed an ordinance and several resolutions. We did send Item Number 1 to the council with no recommendation, and we also sent Agenda Items Number 5, 6, 7, and 8 to the full council. We may be having a meeting in the month of December. If so, we'll be sending that information out. And that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Brunson, will you please deliver your report on traffic and aviation?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Traffic and Aviation has not met since our last council meeting, but I did get an email today from Mr. Doug Hill, who is the director at the airport, our regional airport here in Pine Bluff. And he did let me know that they have completed the asphalt overlay on the runway, and it's looking good out there. So, I'm excited for that, and more great things to come from our regional airport at Grider Field. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver your report on administration?
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee will meet next Tuesday, November the 25th at 3:00 p.m., if that's a good time for my committee members.
Councilmember Brown? Tuesday, November 25th, 3:00 p.m.? Yes, sir. Okay. All right, I got you. Is that good, Clerk Roberts? I will talk. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And finally, Councilmember Brown, will you please deliver your report on public safety?
Yes, Mayor. Public Safety met on the 10th of this month. We heard from Mr. Grayden at Animal Control. He reported that there were 89 animals euthanized between October 10th and November 10th. There were 10 adoptions in the Animal Control Center. And he also mentioned that he had some generator issues, but they were working to get those repaired. And they also have two pump stations that have been ordered, and so hopefully they're in now. Where is he? I saw him earlier. But, so hopefully those pump stations are in to repair that. Also, with kennel upgrades, that is being put out to bid soon. And let's see, that's all we had from Mr. Grayden. And the Fire Department Chief Compton said that they had a smoke alert canvas around October 18th that was partnered with the Red Cross. About 70 smoke alarms were placed in homes during that time, and they were still trying to, there was a few more that they had to do, so they're trying to wrap that up. As far as our fire training center, the sealed bids are going to be opened up, I think on that Thursday. And that was, I guess that was the next day. And that's for the infrastructure for the training center. The building itself is already going to be kind of a prefab situation, but we had to get the infrastructure for that center laid out. So, when we place the building, everything will be ready to go. He also mentioned that we had a ladder truck that was recently wrecked, and at the time, we were trying, they were trying to figure out whether or not the insurance company was going to total out that truck or not. And I believe that it was not. Are we going to be able to repair it? Okay, so we'll be able to repair that truck. During the meeting, we discussed if that truck was totaled, a demo truck that was available, and that was going to be roughly $900,000 for that. So, with us being able to repair the truck that we have, then we won't have to order that demo at this time. So, that saved us a little bit of money there. Within the Police Department, Chief Warrior, she gave our crime stats. Overall, crime's down 11%. She reported that we have 96 sworn officers at this time, and we have foreign process, of hiring process that'll bring our total to about 100 officers. She gave a report on the homicides. It was 115 to three. That's juvenile, 115 days since a juvenile homicide and three days since the last adult homicide. And she also reported that Holiday Patrol was active for the holiday, for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we have adequate funding in their budget for overtime. Also, during public safety, we looked at two of our agenda items. We had Agenda Item Number 2. It was discussed in committee, and it was sent to the full council without a recommendation. And Agenda Item Number 4, it was sent to the full council with a due pass. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you so, thank you so much. And we will go into reviewing the proposed ordinances and resolutions, but we will go out of order in light of the time constraints on one of the speakers that requested to speak on an Agenda Item, Item Number 10. So, we will listen to that first, and then we will address Item Number 18 that we just added, and then commence with the regular listing of the agenda. Councilmember Holcomb?
Agenda Item Number 10, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Center for Community Progress.
And I apologize too for, what I meant to do was allow for Ms. Sarah, I messed this up all the time. Sarah Torrey, Attorney Sarah Torrey, to deliver a brief presentation to the council, and then we can commence. I do apologize for going out of order. Go ahead. Attorney Torrey, please go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
We can hear you very well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor Flowers, members of council. I'm honored to address you. My name is Sarah Torrey. I'm a senior fellow with the Center for Community Progress. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. You have an MOU in your packet that is proposed from the Center for Community Progress, which is a national nonprofit that focuses on serving communities, working in partnership with local governments to address vacant, abandoned, deteriorated properties in a manner that is equitable, that is in service of residents. We have worked with communities all over the country. We also are known for our work with land banking, have worked certainly on legislation supporting among the 350 land banks throughout the country. So, the proposal before you is a scholarship opportunity from the Center for Community Progress to Pine Bluff that grows out of work we have been doing throughout the state of Arkansas over the last few years that I've been honored to lead. It's been a privilege to speak with Mayor Flowers and her team, to meet with some folks in Pine Bluff, and I'm eager to get on the ground should the council approve this MOU, and come and meet with you all and learn more about the challenges that you are facing related to vacant, abandoned property, related to code enforcement processes, et cetera, and to hopefully make some thoughtful and concrete recommendations to support your efforts going forward. Happy to address any questions that you may have, and really, it's an honor to speak with you, and I look forward to being in the ground of Pine Bluff again very soon.
Thank you so much, Attorney Torrey. And before we move into our, the review of our ordinances and resolutions, I just wanted to afford any council members to ask any questions or make comments in response. Councilmember Mays?
It's Number 10, right?
Yes.
How are you today?
Fine, thank you, sir.
Great. Can you explain it just a little bit more? I mean, I just got this. And I read it, and I'm like, just another minute or two, just explain it so the people can-
Sure, sure. So, what we are proposing is we need to take a deep dive review at local Pine Bluff policies and practices related to addressing vacant, abandoned, deteriorated properties. Some of the systems, of course, that impact those properties, housing and building code enforcement, to a certain extent, land banking programs. There's no land bank state statute in Arkansas, but there are increasingly communities around the state that are experimenting with local land banking programs. What are equitable ways to increase our use of policy tools that are already on the books, again, to heal some of those vacant, abandoned, deteriorated properties in a manner that, of course, avoids any kind of displacement, but seeks to serve the larger community in alignment with larger community goals. So, over a process of several months, we would anticipate meeting with a wide group of stakeholders in Pine Bluff. We are also actively working throughout the rest of the state in places like Helena, West Helena, E Lane, bits in Little Rock, other places around the state that are addressing some of the same challenges that you are. And over that period of time, we would also do a deep review of your local ordinances, for example, and other programs that have been in place for a long time, or newer programs, and then submit to you a series of recommendations based on that process in a deliverable we hope would be compelling, really community-centered deliverable, making concrete recommendations. Those recommendations could range from specific data tools that might be useful in your community around housing and building code enforcement, around vacant abandoned property, around air property and family land. Could range from specific tweaks to local ordinances for your consideration. Always important, of course, we would want to work very closely with your city attorney and always be in alignment with her guidance and advice. I am an attorney, but I'm not an Arkansas attorney, so I need to make sure I'm being very thoughtful and respectful with folks on the ground. Also, would make recommendations around considering possibilities for land banking in Pine Bluff. Is that a wise course? What would that look like? How could Pine Bluff learn from and also teach other communities around Arkansas that are experimenting with the same things? Is that helpful, sir?
Yeah, so who are you dealing with, working with in city hall other than the mayor?
Well, I believe Mayor's Chief of Staff would be our point of contact, is to set up site visits, et cetera, but I would certainly want to meet with every council member, your team- But I would certainly want to meet with every councilmember, your teams. Would want to meet with housing and building code enforcement and the Planning Department, sort of any entity in City Hall in government that touches real property.
And Attorney Torrey, let me piggyback on that too, because I was going to save this for closing, but I would be remiss if I did not recognize Director Lockett, who actually has been working with you already, brought you to us and was responsible for your participation in a day-long, sort of summit-style event that allowed us to get to this point. And he also helped set up the meeting that allowed us to discuss what this relationship and this MOU would look like. So the first answer, really, to Councilmember Mays' question is it has already been Director Lockett, and he would definitely be integral in addition to the mayor's office, the inspection and zoning, and several other of the offices that work under the mayor's office. And we would do so in conjunction with reporting out to the council along the way. So, thank you so much, council. Hold on. There are other people with questions. But thank you so much, Director Lockett, for what you did. I just wanted to point that out. And then I believe that there are a couple of other councilmembers with questions. Councilmember Lockett.
Yes, ma'am. In your later, in your letter dated October the 17th, 2025, in your timeline, they seem to be a little bit off because on page four of five, the statement is, "The project must be completed by December the 15th, 2025." That's got to be an error, right?
Oh, yes, sir. That should be December 2026.
Okay, all right. That's, that's, now, over on page five, that, the, the, um, next to the last statement states that the document should be signed no later than October the 31st, 2025. That's got to be extended, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Those are just, just some clerical things that I pointed out just because of the time? Okay. That's all I have.
Councilmember.
And he, and he asked some of the questions that I asked, was going to ask in reference to the October date. And also, on page two, it says the timeframe is from October 1st, 2025 to December 15th. That would need to be fixed before I can say yes to anything. And then you said something about, it appears, and I don't know, it appears that the goal is to turn a land bank situation here in Pine Bluff. But I heard you say that there's no land banking statutes. Did I hear that right?
There is not a state-enabling legislation for land banking in Arkansas. And so the communities that have explored land banking programs, which include Little Rock, and also they're working on it in Helena, West Helena, have to use existing other state authorities to be able to do their land banking activities. So that would be something we need to look at, to consider whether and how a land banking program might be of use in Pine Bluff.
And can you give us some information in regards to what's the difference between land banking and urban renewal? I know that personally, my research that I've done, I know land banking is able to clear, clear some titles and extinguish some tax liens and to acquire holdings and repurpose them for blight, et cetera, et cetera. But also, urban renewal can do it on a more major level in regards to infrastructure, in regards to tax incentive financing, where we can have, we can pick out a district of where we wanted to look at blight and look at situations, and we would look at the value of those properties. And when we look at the value of the property, that will be locked in at that particular moment that we look at that property. But then later on, as we make improvements and things to that area, then we would be able to do some, we would be able to benefit from that because it would be an increase in value of the property. But yet, it would go from the base to what was increased in value property if you was doing it with urban renewal without taxing the people.
Excuse me, and forgive me if I'm squinting. I'm trying to lean in to make sure I can hear.
I got you.
So, so one of the things that we would certainly need to do is take a close look at urban renewal law in Arkansas in conjunction with whatever authorities are available for land banking-type programs in a city. I can't comment on those now without having done that research, but that would be a really important part of our analysis.
Okay.
So, thank you.
So, I got one more question.
Councilmember Mays.
One more question. So, what's it going to cost, Pine Bluff? There's a cost to everything now.
Well, Community Progress is offering this as a scholarship to the city of Pine Bluff. We are provided funding from the Walton Foundation to do work in a series of Arkansas communities. And so there is no cost to the city. But we always, of course, when we enter into these types of relationships, want to reduce everything to an MOU and make sure that everybody's on the same page.
MOU, explain to the people.
Memorandum of understanding.
I understand, but you're talking to all these people, you know?
Oh, yes, sir. A memorandum of understanding, so a document that kind of lays out expectations on each side, what you all can expect from us, and what we are committed to completing, and what we can expect from you all, or what the kinds of support we would need to be on the ground, for example. And we will need help, of course, and support to set up meetings and that sort of thing.
One more question.
There is no cost.
One more question. There's a cost to everything. Where are you from? Where are you talking from?
So I am based in Atlanta, Georgia. But I'm actually zooming in from North Carolina, where I'm at a conference with a number of land justice attorneys, folks who work on family land and air property, which is a topic that I work on quite a bit.
Thank you so much. Councilmember.
I just have one more comment. And that is, it really doesn't have to be one or the other in regards to land banking or urban renewal. Let me give you a scenario. Land banks can clear titles, assemble lands, eliminate blight, prepare parcels. Urban renewal can use assembled land and TIF financing, which is what I just talked about, the tax increment financing to build major projects. And so it would look a little something like this. It would be like the land bank can acquire and clear 25 abandoned lots across two blocks. And then urban renewal could come in and create a redevelopment district using the TIF funding to upgrade streets, lightings, and utilities, and et cetera. And then the third step would be the builders coming in with units for housing or development or commercial centers and stuff. And so Pine Bluff can benefit from a collaborative thing instead of one or the other in regards to this because it will be a benefit in reference to new housing, new business sites, increased tax revenue, neighborhood stabilization. So a land bank helps Pine Bluff handle blight, abandoned properties, scattered vacant lots, and redevelopment, pre-preparedness. And urban renewal helps Pine Bluff implement major redevelopment and infrastructure improvements and district scale revitalization. So I just wanted to let the citizens know that it can, it doesn't necessarily have to be one or the other. It could be a joint thing that can benefit the whole city. So I just wanted to give that little example of how, if we were able to become a land bank city, how it could work well with urban renewal agency too. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
One more. I have no confidence in urban renewal.
Okay, we're not going to, first of all, this is not about urban renewal, so we're going to stop. This is an MOU that affords us technical assistance from a national organization with a long record and strong credibility. Our code enforcement director brought this organization to us. This is about us taking advantage of a scholarship to enable us to receive assistance for whatever we do. This is not land bank legislation. We haven't begun to do that this meeting or this month. This is just about us receiving assistance so that we can do a number of things, which I think was just mentioned. Not only the technical assistance that may refer to land bank, but also, we talked about ordinance and policy review, as well as a review of our best practices. So I think that unless there are any more questions regarding this particular resolution, if we could stay focused on this, because this is not about a land bank, per se, and this resolution is not about urban renewal. This is strictly about us working with this national, highly credible organization for technical services that would not cost us any money. That's what it's about. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I make a motion.
We haven't read it yet.
Oh.
We sure didn't. You know what? Thank you always, Councilmember Brown, for keeping us straight. But I will entertain a motion later, after we hear from Madam City Attorney. So if you don't have, if we have no more questions, and thank you so much, Attorney Torrey, for your time and explanation, and also for this opportunity. Thank you.
And before we, before we have her read it, I just would like to make sure that I'm understanding that before this goes, when it goes to the city clerk, it will be fixed with the dates that is on here.
Well, let me say this. This is, this is not, this is a resolution authorizing me to enter into a contract. We can amend the tweaks and what's basically amounting to Scrivener's errors, but absolutely, we will make those amendments before we sign off on anything. Yes. Thank you. And thank you, Attorney Torrey.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your patience. I know we've kind of been out of order. And we will go ahead and hear from Madam City Attorney to read the resolution.
Whereas the Center for Community Progress is offering the city of Pine Bluff a technical assistance scholarship of up to 300 hours to support the city's ongoing efforts to address vacant, abandoned, and deteriorated properties. And whereas the city of Pine Bluff wishes to enter into an agreement with the Center for Community Progress, city of Pine Bluff, to create more effective local government tools to address vacant, abandoned, and deteriorated properties. And whereas this engagement will assess the viability and opportunity that may exist for the creation or utilization of a land banking program, akin to such programs that exist in the absence of state-enabling legislation in communities like Little Rock, Arkansas. It would also examine what primary acquisition strategies are available to support such a program. And whereas, thanks to the generous support of the Walton Family Foundation, the activities and services described in this MOU, including any technical assistance or support provided by Community Progress, are to be provided to the city at no cost. And whereas, it is desired to approve the terms and conditions of the, an agreement with the Center for Community Progress. And whereas, the mayor should be authorized to execute the attached five-page memorandum of understanding to this end. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached memorandum of understanding consisting of five pages, which is incorporated herein by reference with the Center for Community Progress for the purposes set forth therein.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the, that resolution, item Number 10, be adopted. Any discussion? With no further discussion? All those who wish to vote for the adoption of Resolution Number 10 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
No.
Okay. Motion passes.
Agenda Item Number 18, a resolution congratulating Dr. Tamara P. Glover for being crowned Mrs. USA International Global 2025-26 at the USA World Pageant in New Orleans, Louisiana, commending her for a life of faith and service to women, and wishing her good luck and happy outcome in the International Global Pageant to be held in September 2026 in Malaysia.
Whereas Pine Bluff's own Dr. Tamara P. Glover, a licensed clinical social worker, professor, wife, mother, and internationally recognized maternal mental health advocate, has been crowned Mrs. USA International Global 2025 through 2026 at the USA World Pageant in New Orleans, Louisiana. And whereas, her victory was further enhanced when she received the prestigious Queen of Queens Award for earning the highest overall score among every contestant across all divisions, solidifying her as one of the top-performing women in the country. And whereas, Dr. Glover's progression, first as Miss Pine Bluff, then Miss Arkansas, and now Mrs. USA International Global, has made her one of the most accomplished title holders to emerge from the city of Pine Bluff. And whereas, Dr. Glover is a proud graduate of the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff, where she earned a bachelor's degree, Arkansas State University, where she attained a master's of social work degree, Jackson State University, where she achieved a PhD in social work, and Harvard University, where she participated in the prestigious management development program held by the university's Graduate School of Education. And whereas, Dr. Glover now serves as an associate professor of social work, co-owns fulfilled life counseling with her husband Leo, and travels the nation representing Pine Bluff on the national and global stage, speaking on maternal mental health, family wellness, empowerment, and resilience. And whereas, over the next year, Dr. Glover will travel the United States as the official face of the USA World Pageant's organization, sharing her message of healing, hope, and mental health awareness, pointing towards September of 2026, when she will represent the United States at the International Global Pageant in Malaysia, carrying her national title and the pride of Pine Bluff on the world stage. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that we, the mayor, and the members of the City Council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, hereby congratulate Ms. Tamara P. Glover for being crowned Mrs. USA International Global 2025 through 2026. We further commend her for a life of faith and career of service to women facing the challenge of postpartum depression. And we wish her the very best of luck and a happy outcome in the International Global Pageant next December 2026 in the country of Malaysia.
So Dr. Glover, if there is something that you would like to say, would ask you, do you come to the podium?
In life, I believe that dreams do come true. And I'm standing right before you today as proof. I mean, proof. First, I want to say thank you so much to Mayor Vivian Flowers, the entire council, City Council, and to all of the incredible citizens that's behind me, the city of progress, Pine Bluff, Arkansas. You know, I'll be honest, it's not just my win, but this is our win. This is our win. And so from the moment I stepped on the stage as Mrs. Pine Bluff, then going on to represent our great state as Mrs. Arkansas, and now standing before you today as Mrs. USA International Global. Pine Bluff have lifted me up. And from my recollection, I must be honest, we've made history. I am the first national title holder across the system. There are multiple pageant systems, but I am the first national title holder from Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And so when I say this crown belongs to everyone, it belongs to everyone. This crown is not just a symbol of pageantry. It is a spotlight on purpose. It is representation for mothers, mental health, healing, but most importantly, hope. And Pine Bluff, I want to thank you so much for embracing me on this mission that is so close to my heart, and that is maternal mental health. Because we understand that when mothers are healed, families thrive. But most importantly, communities rise and generations are changed for forever. I accept this recognition with deep gratitude and. I accept this recognition with deep gratitude and an even deeper responsibility. And yes, Pine Bluff, I still need your support, because the journey continues. In September, I'll have an opportunity to carry the United States' flag and the heart of Pine Bluff all the way to Malaysia.
Yes.
As I compete on an international stage, and so I am standing in awe of what God has done. Truly, it is because of His goodness, His loving kindness, and His tender mercies that are new every single day that I am where I am today. Again, Mayor Flowers, thank you. To the entire City Council, thank you guys so much. Pine Bluff, thank you for believing in me, supporting me, and celebrating me on this major win. And let me be honest, the best is yet to come. And I promise to continue putting Pine Bluff on the map, because the truth of the matter is, is that this city, the City of Progress, is filled with lots of powerful, gifted, but most importantly, purpose-driven individuals who make our community shine every single day, and I'm just happy to play a small role in it. So, thank you so much. God bless everybody. And again, I'm excited and honored to serve as Mrs. USA International Global 2025-26.
Dr. Glover, or should I say Mrs. Pine Bluff, or should I say Mrs. Arkansas, or now Mrs. USA International Global? Congratulations. You have said it all. You are a wonderful representation of this city, and we just ask at this time if you could step up here and take a picture?
Yes.
Great. Thanks.
Y'all tight, man, son?
Can we try it?
Try it. Good.
Can we do another one? I don't know. Okay. Got you.
One more? Perfect.
And now, I will entertain a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we adopt item number 18. Any discussion? With no discussion, all of those who wish to vote for resolution number 18 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number one, an ordinance abolishing the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, dissolving the Urban Renewal Agency Board of Commissioners and discharging the members thereof of further responsibility as board members, providing for the transfer of all assets and liabilities of the Urban Renewal Agency to the City of Pine Bluff and for related purposes, for the first reading.
Whereas, it is desired to concentrate urban renewal and vitalization efforts within the city's administrative framework. And whereas, the role performed by the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, can be efficiently distributed among existing city departments with little or no interruption in the delivery of services to the residents of the city. And whereas, the dissolving, dissolving the urban renewal and transfer of its operations and assets duties to city departments will promote council oversight and eliminate unnecessary duplication of services. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, created by Resolution Number 142, passed November 6, 1961, and revised by Resolution Number 4041, passed August 7, 2017, is hereby abolished. B, the Board of Commissioners of the Urban Renewal Agency is dissolved and its members are discharged from any duties or obligations associated with being a member of the Board. Section 2, all assets of the Urban Renewal Agency are hereby transferred and conveyed to the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. B, prior to the effective date of this ordinance, the Board of Commissioners and the Executive Director of the Urban Renewal Agency shall execute all needed documents, let's see, all needed documents, for example, bills, bills of sale, assignments titles, transfers to the City of Pine Bluff, and all right and title in interest to the Urban Renewal Agency in any real or personal property, good, possession, right of action, or contract or asset of any nature, coate or incoate. Section 3, the Urban Renewal Agency shall expend only such funds as expressly authorized by the 2025 municipal budget for its routine operation, and enter into or extend no contractual agreements with a term extending beyond the effective date of this ordinance. Section 4, the current activities, programs, and projects of the Urban Renewal Agency shall come under the administration and direction of the mayor with oversight by the City Council. B, an existing contractual obligation of the Urban Renewal Agency with a term extending beyond the effective date of this ordinance will either be terminated or assumed by the City of Pine Bluff. C, if the Urban Renewal Agency is a party to any litigation, the city will substitute itself in the litigation in the place of the Urban Renewal Agency. Members of the Board of Commissioners who may be party defendants due to the actions of the Urban Renewal Agency or its board will continue to receive legal defense through the city and the Arkansas Municipal League when legal assistance is provided under League rules. Section 5, all ordinances or resolutions in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 6, the sections, subsections, paragraphs, and sentences of this ordinance are declared to be severable. Should any of the foregoing be deemed unlawful, the remaining shall constitute, shall continue to be given full force of effect. Section 7, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will cause it to be published consistent with Arkansas law, and it shall take effect, I believe we said, the 31st of December, 2025.
Place it on the calendar. Item number 2, an ordinance amending Section 21-26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting the classification of personnel within the Police Department, amending the 2025 municipal budget to transfer funds to defray the costs of these changes and related purposes, for the first reading.
Whereas, it is desired to make changes respecting the classification of personnel within the Pine Bluff Police Department for the betterment of the department, to add two Assistant Chief positions, eliminate two Deputy Chief positions, and reduce the number of Sergeant positions from 20 to 19. And whereas, a transfer of funds within the department's budget is needed to defray the costs associated with these changes. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that Section 21-26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended as follows. Amend Paragraph 2 thereof to increase the number of Assistant Chiefs from 1 to 3. B, repeal and delete Paragraph 3 to eliminate the two positions of Deputy Chief of Police. C, reduce the number of Lieutenant positions in Paragraph 5 from 11 to 10 effective April 30, 2026, reallocating the balance of the salary reflected in the 2026 municipal budget within the Police Department. D, to reduce the number of Sergeant positions in Paragraph 6 from 20 to, from 20 to 19. And E, renumber current Paragraphes 4 through 7 as 3 through 6. Section 2, the 2025 municipal budget is amended, all to be transferred to defray costs of these changes by transferring the amount budgeted for one Sergeant position, reallocating the sum between each new Assistant Chief position to increase the budgeted amount for the positions. Section 3, all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 4, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will cause it to be published as required by law. And Section 5, this ordinance will take effect on the 31st day after its approval.
Place it on the calendar. Item number 4, an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Article 5, Section 19-137 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended as follows. Amend Paragraph 2 thereof to increase the number of Assistant Chiefs from 1 to 3. B, repeal and delete Paragraph 3 to eliminate the two positions of Deputy Chief of Police. C, reduce the number of Lieutenant positions in Paragraph 5 from 11 to 10 effective April 30, 2026, reallocating the balance of the salary reflected in the 2026 municipal budget within the Police Department. D, to reduce the number of Sergeant positions in Paragraph 6 from 20 to, from 20 to 19. And E, renumber current Paragraphes 4 through 7 as 3 through 6. Section 2, the 2025 municipal budget is amended, all to be transferred to defray costs of these changes by transferring the amount budgeted for one Sergeant position, reallocating the sum between each new Assistant Chief position to increase the budgeted amount for the positions. Section 3, all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 4, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will cause it to be published as required by law. And Section 5, this ordinance will take effect on the 31st day after its approval. Place it on the calendar. Item number 4, an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Article 5, Section 19-137 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting the appeal procedure for reviews and disciplinary action imposed on uniform employees and for related purposes, for the first reading.
Whereas, it is desired to revise the discretion of the Review Committee charged with the responsibility of considering requests for review by uniformed employees disagreeing with the discipline imposed against them by the Chief of the Department. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the Chapter 19, Article 5, Section 19-137 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended as follows. C, upon the agreement of at least two committee members, the committee will make one of the following decisions regarding each matter before the committee. Number 1, that the disciplinary action be upheld as originally imposed. Number 2, that the disciplinary, discipline imposed shall be overturned and no other discipline be imposed. Number 3, that the disciplinary action be reduced. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 3, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will ensure its publication consistent with Arkansas law. Section 4, this ordinance takes place on the 31st day after its adoption and shall apply to all appeals made after its effective date.
Place it on the calendar. Item number 5, a resolution providing for placement of costs of correcting certain nuisances on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such.
Whereas, ACA 1454-903.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that item number 5, no, okay, yeah, that item number 5 be adopted. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Bellz?
I would like to move that we amend this item to remove lines 6 through 18 for further review.
On page 15.
On page 15. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to adopt item number 5 by removing Items 16 through 18 on page 15. Any discussion? With no discussion. So, with no further discussion, all of those who are voting for the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted.
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt as, item number 5 as amended. Any discussion? With no discussion, all of those who wish to vote for the adoption of item number 5 as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed.
Item number 6, a resolution amending Resolution Number 4936 to remove property northwest corner of Cherry and Valjean.
Whereas, the property referenced below was included in Resolution Number 4936. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the Resolution Number 4936 passed September 15, 2025, is amended as follows, on page 16, delete lines 1 through 3 to remove reference to property with the street address of northwest center of Cherry and Valjean and the parcel number. The Code Enforcement Department will take steps to file this resolution with the Jefferson County deed recorder.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, that item number 6 be adopted. Any discussions? With no discussion, all those who wish to vote for the adoption of item number 6 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 7, a resolution amending Resolution Number 4852 to remove a property 501 North Haverty Street.
Whereas, the property referenced below was included in Resolution Number 4852. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that Resolution Number 4852 passed December 16, 2024, is amended as follows. Page 23, delete lines 19 through 21 to remove reference to property with the street address of 501 North Haverty Street. The Code Enforcement Department will take steps to file this resolution with the Jefferson County deed recorder.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that item number 7 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all of those who wish to adopt item number 7 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 8, a resolution amending Resolution Number 4817 to correct the parcel number for a property 4105 West Shore 3th Avenue.
Whereas, the parcel number needs to be corrected with respect to a property listed in Resolution Number 4838, passed November 4, 2024, titled "A Resolution Providing for Placement of Costs of Correcting Certain Nuisances on Tax Books as Delinquent Taxes and Collected as Such." Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that Resolution Number 4838 passed November 4, 2024, is amended as follows. Respecting property described under the name mark, Elven B Marks, with location 4105 West Shore 3th Avenue, which is found on page 20 of Resolution Number 4838, should reflect the following changes, the change in the parcel number on line 12. The Code Enforcement Department will cause this resolution to be filed in the deed and the lien of records of Jefferson County, Arkansas, and mail copy to the last known address of the property owner.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that item number 8 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all of those who wish to adopt item number 8 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 9, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreement with UHY Advisors Mid-Atlantic Incorporated to conduct forensic audit for the City of Pine Bluff and for related purposes.
Whereas, the City of Pine Bluff has received and reviewed proposals from interested vendors to conduct a comprehensive forensic audit of financial records for the City of Pine Bluff for fiscal years 2023 and 2024, and perform a review of the Special Tax Fund for January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2024. And whereas, the firm of UHY Advisors Mid-Atlantic Incorporated was determined to have submitted the most qualified submission, and it is recommended that said firm be retained to perform the audit. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, the mayor is authorized and directed to execute an agreement with the firm of UHY Advisors Mid-Atlantic Incorporated to perform a comprehensive forensic audit for the consideration consistent with the terms and conditions set forth in the solicitation for proposals and submission by UHY Advisors Mid-Atlantic Incorporated, along with other provisions which may be standard in agreements for such professional services.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that item number 9 be adopted. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Frazier.
Okay. On this second, on this, I guess it's the second sheet, it shows Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and approximate costs, cost of those phases, but then on the cost of proposal, it says $138,812 just for the professional staff, and then on a cost proposal, it says $98,943. So, that's $237,755. So, is that the cost for this forensic audit, or is it going to be on a sliding scale with this $150,000 to $250,000 for Phase 2, and $50,000 to $75,000? I'm just trying to understand the figures.
It'll, I'm gonna say it'll be up to, I think we have to have our initial meeting And I'll also, let me real quick, I'll remind you that we, in the carryover budget, reserved up to $300,000, which is in a line item specifically for this.
Okay, so when will we know how much it will actually be?
I think we'll know at the end of the process. I think the, the thing about forensic audits, as you know, is it, it's not based upon plan, samples. It is a thorough audit of all records and we're looking at 17 departments as well as the urban renewal as it relates to the seven years of activity for the previous sales and use tax. Two years for all 17 of those along with the mayor's office. So I can't say, I think that's why they offer ranges and they let you know what the cost is, who will be involved, how many hours are estimated. But I think that just like any contract we enter into, we get an estimate, we get a proposal, people kind of get, like give us an idea. And then the companies, just like any other, they invoice against that contract. And that would not be any different with this one.
So the total is 138, right? Is that the total?
Cause it's cost plus, and then the, the professional level part of it. So you got.
But that's the total based on the hours, the hourly rate, so 600 hours, 138,812.
Yeah, but then you have the professional service side of it on the next page.
On the next page.
That's a different company.
Then why is it a?
That's just, those are the three quotes, that's, the first one is.
Right, the first, that's right.
UHY, third one is Clifton, Larson and Allen.
That's right, so the first one, that's right. So this is Grassy on the first one, the second one is UHY, and the third one was Clifton, Larson and Allen, that's right.
Yeah.
So it's 138, but I, I will, it could go up, they might not spend this much, that's what I'm saying. Because the scope of work could change depending on what is found, so I don't want to. So UHY's price is 138,812. That's the price that was in the proposal for the work that they identified that they would do. However, what I'm saying, so that we can be completely transparent, is that we budgeted $300,000 knowing that the scope of this work and what we're asking for could turn into more depending on what is found. So this is the price, 138,812, but I don't want to be on record sitting here in this meeting saying that that is all it's gonna be. Okay? Any further questions? Councilmember Mays? Once this vote is taken and then tomorrow, we will notify them and set up the first meeting. So immediately. Yes, yes, sir, there's work, there's work, there's work to follow, but a part of this process is an initial meeting, cause we don't know these people. So, I mean, we don't start by saying, okay, go to work and we're not turning over records, introducing to finance director, treasurer, clerk's office, there's a whole process involved. Okay, any further questions? All right. With no further questions, all of those who wish to vote for the adoption of item number nine indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 11, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Liberty Pine Bluff for the collection of sanitation fees.
Whereas on our bounce September 11th, 2025, the city of Pine Bluff entered into a contract with Cards Holding LLC to provide sanitation services required by the city commencing November, November 1st, 2025. And whereas to facilitate the collection of the fees for sanitation services, the mayor should be authorized to enter into an agreement with Liberty Pine Bluff to charge its customers a, a fixed and fix the amount that Liberty Pine Bluff may charge its customers and the city as its compensation for this service as reflected in the contract between the city of Pine Bluff and Cards Holdings LLC. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached agreement for collection of municipal charges with Liberty Pine Bluff consisting of three pages, which is hereby incorporated herein by reference for the purposes and terms and consideration outlined therein.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that item number 11 be adopted. Any discussion? Councilmember Mays? No, Mr. Yandel was here, but he would not speak to this, this is a contract that would be between the city of Pine Bluff and Liberty. Councilmember Frazier?
I was just letting him know that it's the same, Liberty is the one that collects our sanitation.
Basically because we're not with Waste Management anymore, now we have to.
Do a contract with.
Do a contract with Cards so they can work.
Do the billing.
To bill it.
It would be the same.
So it won't be, it won't change the, the customers, nothing changes with them, they'll pay their water bill, but they'll, Cards will collect from Liberty.
Any further questions? No further questions? All those who wish to vote for item number 11 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 12, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Watson Chapel Water Association for the collection of sanitation fees.
Whereas on our bounce September 11th, 2025, the city of Pine Bluff entered into a contract with Cards Holding LLC to provide sanitation services required by the city commencing on November 1st, 2025. And whereas to facilitate the collection of the fees for sanitation services, the mayor should be authorized to enter into an agreement with Watson Chapel Water Association to charge its customers and fix the amount that Watson Chapel Water may charge its customers and the city as its compensation for this service as reflected in the contract between the city of Pine Bluff and Cards LLC. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached agreement for collection of municipal charges with Watson Chapel Water Association consisting of four pages, which is hereby incorporated herein by reference for the purposes, terms and consideration outlined therein.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that item number 12 be adopted. Any discussion? Councilmember Mays?
How did Watson Chapel Water get into this?
They act, they do the billing since they are the water company for that segment of Pine Bluff.
And there's actually two more water companies I wasn't aware of at the time, Highway 63 Water and Harden Water. There's two more.
So are they?
So the same way that Liberty provides water services for the lion's share of Pine Bluff.
Right.
Then we enter into a contract asking them to do the billing and then pay what, pay the sanitation company for sanitation, we're doing the same thing with the other water companies that serve, that provide water services for other residents in the city of Pine Bluff. So they are a bunch smaller, this is one of three other ones and there are two other ones, and we really just had no idea until we went through this process. And I think because we had waste management for so long, people just didn't know, but now we know.
Can we, is it a clause in, in the contract if we ever wanted to cancel it? Can do that?
Cancel what?
I mean, I'm just saying, y'all, we're doing this company.
Let me understand your question, cancel what?
Well, I'm just saying.
Cancel what?
I was with, you know.
I just want to answer your question, cancel what?
The contract.
With the water companies?
Right, I'm just saying, yeah, right.
I, I think that in any contract, it can be canceled either to not breach a contract or whatever provisions are in the contract, that you'd have to, you know, reference the advice of city attorney, Madam City Attorney. But the bottom line is they are providing a service for us and for the sanitation company based on how we've done it in the past and based on how we're planning to do it in the future. We don't have the capacity and this way also it combines billing for our residents, which they want. So if you don't want to make folks mad because you start giving them two bills, we just probably need to move on.
So if, if, when the customers start complaining about anything, who do they call?
About the pickups?
Right.
They would call Cards.
Cause we have a local company, we have a local calling center now, they can actually call, they can go over there, they can email, so. Any further questions? With no further questions, all of those who wish to vote for item number 12 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 13, a resolution rejecting a conveyance of real property to the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and authorizing the mayor to execute a necessary deed to the other documents to divest city of any interest or relationship to the property.
Whereas the approval of the governing body is required in order for the city to accept a gift conveyance of real estate to the city. And whereas the real property described below was deeded to the city without the city's knowledge or acceptance. And whereas the city council rejects this conveyance and directs the mayor to undertake the necessary steps to convey the property back to the grantor. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, on behalf of the city does hereby reject the conveyance of the real estate described in that certain limited warranty deed dated January 10th, 2024 and filed a record in the deed of records in Jefferson County, Arkansas on January 22nd, 2024 wherein Tanya S. Outts, trustee of Girdon E. Thornberry and Sue Ellen Thornberry revocable trust is grantor and the city of Pine Bluff is grantee. The legal, the legal description is set forth below. Section two, the mayor is authorized and directed to execute such deeds and other documents needed to convey this property back to the grantor.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that item number 13 be adopted. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to know how was something deeded to the city without the city's knowledge? I mean, cause don't they have to get a signature or something from the city in order for us to receive a property?
I, I hate to say this, I mean, this was before my time, I don't know how this happened. All I saw, I was approached with the, you know, responsibility to fix it and this is how we fix it. I couldn't tell you how that happened. Councilmember Brown?
So with the, is there, is there something on the property? Is it just a piece of, is it a blank lot or?
I don't know. All I know is it was brought to me and of course it was of concern that this was deeded and the process was done without the city approving it. I mean, that's problematic, no matter what's on the property, it's prob, we can't, whatever's on there, we can't allow this to stay like this. It was just done wrong. And so there, if there was no signature, no agreement to receive the property and certainly no council approval, no matter what, we need to reverse this. And then, then if there's a conversation, cause I, I don't know who the people are, but I think if there's a conversation to go through the right process to receive the property and I think receive it knowing what, you know, issues there might be with the property or the structures on it, then, you know, I think all of us would be open to it, but I think at this point, we're just trying to right a wrong.
Got you. Okay.
Councilmember Mays?
Whereas the city council rejects this conveyance and directs the mayor to undertake the necessary steps to convey the property.
Councilmember Mays, do you have a question? Cause we've already heard the reading of this, so I don't want to delay.
I understand, but it's not, it's not.
Do you have a question?
It's not making any sense.
Okay, we're rejecting what was done without our permission, that's the bottom line.
Who, who done it?
I, I couldn't tell you, but it was done. And right now it has this owning property that we didn't agree to receive, so we're just trying to right that wrong. Any further question? With no further question, all of those who wish to vote for item 13 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Agenda item number 14, a resolution approving an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage for city employees, officials and dependents and for related purposes.
Whereas the city provides city employees health insurance as part of their compensation package. And whereas because the current carrier of the coverage has quoted a 21% increase in the annual cost, the city invited through its broker, interested vendors to submit proposals in an effort to obtain the most effective, cost-effective plan. And whereas, after consideration of different proposals, the plan submitted by Blue Cross Blue Shield has been determined to offer the best option for the city of Pine Bluff. And whereas the mayor should be authorized to execute an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide healthcare coverage for its employees, officials and dependents commencing January 1, 2026. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor is authorized and directed to execute an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide healthcare coverage for city employees, officials and dependents effective January 1, 2026. Section two, that for purposes of this resolution, healthcare coverage or health insurance coverage includes medical prescription and other options available through the plan.
Move for adoption?
Move for adoption?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that item number 14 be adopted. Any question, any question, any discussion?
I have a question, so are we in the process of changing healthcare?
Yes.
Mayor.
Hold on. Were you finished, Councilmember Holcomb?
Okay, yes, I got another question, so. Another question, when are we gonna go into our budget proceedings?
As soon as we finish this, obviously it's difficult to calculate and know what's in the budget if we don't know what the healthcare costs are. And that has been a challenge and I think we just received confirmation, I think it was the last week of what the cost increase would be. We knew it would be up to 21% and then we got notification from our broker that United Healthcare was offering to renew at 21%. And obviously that would pose a hardship for our personnel and for the city. So we met with them last week and based upon the other quotes that we received, the best course of action was for us to go with Blue Cross Blue Shield, whose rates amounted to a 9% increase from where we are. So that would be a 9% increase, I think it was a nine or eight? 8% increase, so it'd be an 8% increase versus a 21% increase. So that is the reason for the delay and obviously that would have made a big difference in the budget. So we've made those adjustments and in the hopes that tonight we would be given the authority to move forward with the change, the switch to Blue Cross, which obviously would pose a very different budget than if we stayed with United Healthcare. Councilmember Mays, I think you had a question and then Councilmember Fells.
We, changing again, essentials. I like United Healthcare. I think if we change in the midst of, in the middle of this thing like that.
It's not in the middle, this is time to change.
Well, I'm just saying, I say stay with what we got because if you go ahead, well, y'all can do what you want to do. I'm just saying, once you.
We're not doing what we want to do, this is a process, Councilmember, and you have a vote and I just want to make sure when you're speaking and when you're taking a vote that you understand that even though many of us like what we have and don't want to go through the process of change, I want to make sure you understand if we stay with what we have, you are making a vote for our employees, many of them our residents, your constituents, to absorb a 21% increase in the cost of their insurance. Is that, are you understand, I'm just asking if you understand what I'm saying.
We need to bring them on the carpet and see, you know, just keep, just continue to change. to change like this here.
Okay. Council member Fells?
Uh, mayor, with this being the cheaper option, I do believe it's appropriate for us to go with the cheaper option. And I do thank you because we did have a preliminary conversation about it. My only question is more of a clerical thing. Whenever this is filed in the clerk's office, will we be able to have a, some type of support and documentation to just outlines what Blue Cross is proposing at this moment? I always say that because I don't see that listed here. And sometimes, you know, years from now, employees might pull this legislation for whatever decision-making purposes and they just need to be able to see what we voted on.
We're, we're able to do that? Okay, so we have copies that can be passed out to you, which we will also add to the legislation, yes. Any further questions?
Yes, I do.
Council member, council member Lockett and then council member Mays.
Now, will the employees be able to enroll in January? I know a lot of, uh, insurance companies have open enrollment here in the month of November. With this, I'm just curious, would.
How you doing, counsel?
I'm just fine.
Uh, yes, so we can hold open enrollment, I mean, from now till mid-December. Anytime you have a carrier change, um, we always like to talk to your employees and make sure they understand what's going on. Um, and the sooner we get that done, um, there's no delay in ID cards, anything like that from Blue Cross being a carrier change, so.
So do we need to come in and?
Council member Frazier?
Do we need to come in and fill out certain, a new, whole new application or is it just transferred over?
It will transfer. So we take, what we do is we take the census from United Healthcare. Um, anybody that has current coverage with them will carry over to Blue Cross.
Good.
Um, if they don't want to make any changes, they don't have to do anything. If they do, we, uh, they come to us, we handle that along with Vicky.
Any further questions? Council member Mays.
What I'm saying, every time we change like this, it's, it's always a, a mess, which is insurance. We had United Healthcare, what, how long now?
Four years.
Four?
Wait, we switched to United Healthcare in 2021, I believe.
Yeah, we won, we gave it to them because I think it was Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
We had qual, it was Qual Choice before United Healthcare, yes, sir.
And they was playing around with it. I say personally, I say keep it, me, I'm, I'm keep it like it is because this, this was, y'all gonna go up next, next month. I'm just saying.
No, the rates are good for a full year.
And after that, what?
They, they renew every year. So in previous years, we've actually had decreases with United Healthcare. I think it was 2022 and 23. Uh, we send this out to market every year for you guys. So, uh, whether you're getting an increase, decrease, no rate increase, we're going to make sure you're getting the best rates. So we were able to get those decreases because we had competitive data when we sent it out. You were actually originally getting an increase from United. When we sent that data out and got competitive data back, we were able to get, negotiate United down. And this was one of those years where we sent it out, we had competitive data with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, United just wouldn't budge. Uh, we went back to them two times and they wouldn't budge. And, um, 21% compared to 8% is, it's a lot.
Yeah, you saying that now, but we give, we're getting there at a year. Yeah, take it up.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, it, it depends on your claims too. Because we had, we had six or seven claimants that were over $100,000. So that was the big contributing factor into getting an, an increase in, in the first place. But, um, and then healthcare trend, I mean, the cost of healthcare is going up, uh, doctors are charging more, hospitals are charging more. Uh, there's a lot of factors that play into it. But, I mean, like, like mayor said, 21% to 8%, that's a, that's a big jump.
Council member Mays, we have a, we have a broker just to make sure that we're getting the best deal for, for our employees. So that's the whole purpose of this process. Uh, at one point, we were just kind of going with the same company over and over, no matter what they said. So now we have a broker who actually shops around and makes sure that we have the best uh, value for our employees.
Well, we don't, we don't just do that to, um, I've gotten to talk to a lot of you guys' employees. I mean, we get, we give them our cell phone numbers so that way they can call. If they're ever at the doctor, hospital, can't get a prescription filled, they have our cell phone number so they can call us and we can clear up any, anything like that. So, I mean, there's, there's different parts to what we do. We work with Vicky and her team, Latoya, uh, every single day. Uh, so we wear a lot of different hats, uh, not just shopping and all that, so.
Can we talk to Vicky for a minute? She's back here.
Vicky is not, no.
I mean, you know, really.
Vicky, Vicky can't answer questions that would need to come from our broker. And that's what he's here to do and I think he's answered. And the bottom line, council member, and I don't mean to seem impatient, it's just we, we have people working on our behalf so that they can make sure that we are getting the best insurance for the best price for our constituents, for the people who vote for every one of us up here. And, you know, nobody wants to switch for no reason, but when we have information before us that says if we stay where we are, for people who work hard may not make as much as anyone up here, may make more, may have children, may have sick children, we have to be mindful that, you know, a 21% increase could mean a whole lot more for someone and their family, um, economic situation, financial situation than what it means for us. So let's just be mindful of that and please know that we are not changing just to change and, um, so I'll just say that. And if you have, if you, if you have any more questions, I have at it.
Thank you. You, you making some changes into government that.
I don't make changes by myself, sir. I don't make any changes by myself.
Some of the changes, really, you're making too quick.
I don't make any changes by myself. And right now before us, we're not talking about changes I'm making that really the people elected me to make. But what we're talking about is item number 14 as it relates to our insurance. So if you have any further questions about that? Okay. Any further questions? With no further discussion, all of those who wish to vote for item number 14 indicate by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye. No.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the street department to purchase needed equipment from.
Kazi?
How do you, how do you pronounce it?
Kazi?
Kazi?
Mm-hmm.
Infrared, Infrared Reed International.
Whereas the city is in great need of the equipment to promote the maintenance of the city's streets and rights of way. And whereas the department has identified a vendor, Kazi Infrared Reed International, which can provide the needed equipment at a reduced price via use of the source well acquisition option as permitted by city code and state law. And whereas the department should be allowed to purchase the listed equipment for the prices identified in the sales quote. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, the street department is hereby authorized to acquire the equipment listed in the attached sales quote for the prices set forth therein from Kazi Infrared Reed International by using the source well acquisition option pursuant to section two dash 15619 of the city code. Section two, the purchase shall be funded from the sums approved for such purposes in the street department's 2025 budget.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that item number 15 be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes.
Council member Mays.
The, uh, the street department, we spend a lot of money on the street department. And the streets, the streets are terrible. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm voting on money, going out in and out and, and seeing people in the street department setting around.
Okay, we're not doing that.
Well, I did it.
Director. Dockett, can, I just would like to ask you to come to the podium. I have a couple of questions that I think will be valuable for the membership. We know that we entered into a, um, contract earlier this year to use this very kind of technology that only one provider was able to perform. And the thing I would just like to ask for you to share real quick, uh, Director Dockett, is what was the issue that was encountered with regard to being able to access the hot mix that was used for the machine that our current vendor was using?
Upon talking to, um, our current, well, our previous, uh, contractor use, the issue was that there's a particular type of hot mix that he actually liked to use better more than anything else. Uh, unless, talking to the mill companies and also him, unless there is a specific amount or a certain amount being requested, they won't make it because of fear of not being able to get rid of it before it actually goes bad or goes to cold. So with that being said, uh, talking to the company themselves, it's not a specific mixture that you can use, it's just, it's a personal preference.
Okay. And then the other thing, um, that I wanted to ask you to, oh, that even with the contract that we had, can you report, um, how many, um, potholes or the area, what we were able to get done under that contract before the work basically stopped because of this hot mix issue?
What we originally agreed to was 80 burns, uh, per ward that we actually did, which had been supposed to have been per month. He finished two wards and part of, uh, ward three, which he never finished. And that process took, went from when we first granted him to do it up until September when we decided that was too long to try to complete and get everything finished.
So that means that, in which two wards did he complete the burns?
Four and three.
Okay, so in wards four and three, he completed the 80 burns that were planned?
Yes, ma'am.
And those burns were defined based upon your, um, direction and previous assessment with the vendor, looking to see what the great, where the greatest need was in those wards and the other wards that were planned?
Yes.
And then which ward did he do partial work in?
Ward two.
So he did partial work in ward two. He never made it to ward one and so that's when, and thank you very much. Did anybody have any questions? Council member Lockett?
Yes, sir. How long will it take for them to build this particular machine?
Uh, talking to the vendor, he told me that if we got the, uh, order in before this month is over with, he can have everything ready for us by February. He originally had another truck set aside for us, but because it took a minute to actually get to this process, he went and sold it, but he acquired another truck as well.
What about the training? Have we booked training for this particular machine?
Uh, from talking to him, he had already, he said that he can give us one day of training. And from what I've seen from the truck, uh, and talking to one of the operators that use the vehicle and stuff, it's not much extra that's going to be needed. So one day I feel would be plenty enough. And at the same time, he will also, he left a door open for us. If we needed anything else, he would come back and actually provide more.
Council member Mays?
Yeah, that's what's wrong now. They, they, they say they coming back. In, in the fourth ward, you still, you still gotta hit a bump in, in the road. You know that stuff. What, what's the total cost you talking about giving, doing this work for, having it done for, rather?
What do you mean by that?
We, we won't have to pay once we get the machine, we'll be using our own staff. And that's the difference.
Machine cost, what, $400,000?
That's right, that's what's before you, but you were asking what's the total cost to do it?
The machine is set up there, somebody gonna steal it and, and take it somewhere.
Okay. Any further questions? Any further discussion?
I, I just have.
Council member Frazier?
Um, I just have one question. I'm, I'm for the machine if it's the same machine that we were talking about in reference to that was used before. Uh, but I do want to know where it's coming from. I know it say within the department, but per our legislation, we're supposed to know what line item is coming from. Do you know where the funds is coming from? It's not on the legislation.
Y'all need to come up with that. That was a good question.
Director.
They probably have it, they just didn't put it on the.
Mm-hmm, we have it. It's in his budget. Um, but we do need to identify it and so we probably need to make that amendment. And if you could come real quick and, Director Devers, and indicate where that would come from.
It's a good question. The street still look bad, but.
Something of that nature would be considered heavy machinery. And so it would be a purchase of heavy machinery under the capital purchases designation.
Okay, so they already have that in there or will they have to transfer funds to it?
We can transfer the funds and it, it's in their fund balance. It's not in the 25 budget, it's set aside, but we can move it over there as soon as he tells us how much.
So we would, would that take a, we would need to, city attorney, Madam City Attorney, would, would we need to do a separate resolate, resolution to move the money within the street department from the fund to the capital, the heavy machinery line item in their budget, correct? But we would need to do this first, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So how, can you recommend, can you recommend, or maybe if a, um, member of the council has language, um, for an amendment, I would entertain so that we can stay in keeping with the law as Council member Frazier just, um, brought up in her question. Council member Lockett?
Well, I can make a motion, Madam Mayor, to amend this resolution to set forth that the money would be transferred from the capital improvement line item in the street department's budget to the 2025 budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
To the, move, move from the capital, uh, line item.
Capital improvement to heavy machinery in their budget.
To heavy, heavy machinery? Are you saying from capital, uh, improvement to heavy machinery?
The fund balance that is identified as the capital.
Right, from the fund balance to the capital purchase.
Yeah, uh, and Madam, you know, City Attorney, I know that, uh, the, the finance director give you the correct language, but what we're doing is moving the amount needed from the capital improvement, uh, fund balance into the street department's 2025 budget.
Well, but that would have to be a separate resolution. I think what we need to do is amend it so that we're identifying where the money would come from. I think that's all we need to do for this. Am I correct?
So the, the purchase shall be funded from the sums approved, I guess from the capital improvement, uh, fund?
Right.
In the 2025 budget? That.
Well, that's a vice.
I think so. Yeah, that's where it's coming from. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what you're saying. The money's in the capital improvement, equipment, uh, fund balance. We just moved it to the 2025 street department budget.
I think what's most important is that it's there and.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we just, remember we have to identify where money comes from. So that's all we're doing. Okay. So it's, so it's been moved and seconded that item number, council member, let me finish
this and then we'll do discussion.
It's about the, the line item. I'm a little bit confused. So we said that, you said that it needs to be paid from, from the heavy machinery line item?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what the, this needs to say.
But we're not doing that. We're not, we're not voting to move the money. We're just identifying the where, where the money's going to come from for right now.
That's what I'm saying. So we put heavy machinery in this resolution and in the budget adjustment that we do at our next meeting, we move the funds from capital purchases to heavy machinery. So all this needs to say is the heavy machinery line item. Does that make sense?
But do we do that when there's nothing, when that money's not in there right now?
Well, you know what? I think it's better if we go ahead and do this so he can go ahead and make the purchase. We're gonna waste another month.
No, we're not, no, we're not. We're giving it out right now.
Well, you said at the next, you said at the next meeting have a budget adjustment.
No, that's because you all were saying you're gonna move money from capital purchases to heavy machinery. You were all were saying that we need a budget adjustment. Is that correct?
I think we're just trying to identify where the funds are.
Right.
But can it not be, can it not be purchased from the capital?
Right.
Fund?
They are not currently budgeted. So what we will do when we have the exact amount is move the money from.
General.
No, it's not in the general fund. It's in the street fund, but it is set aside. It's not in their budget currently.
Where is it set aside at?
Well.
It gotta be set aside.
It's in their fund balance. So on their balance sheet, they have an amount of.
Okay. Hold on. Because we're, there's been, there's been a, a, uh, motion made and just to clarify, um, are we saying, and I'm asking you, Director Devers? And just to clarify, um, are we saying, and I'm asking you, Director Devers, that in terms of for such purposes, I guess, are, are we saying that the money would be coming, um, from the capital improvement fund, which will be moved to the, I, do we have, council? City Attorney, City Attorney, do we have, do we have to identify that the money will be moved? Or all, or do we just need to indicate where the money will be coming from or where the money is?
Where it will be coming from? So you, you said that there's a fund, a fund balance within the street department.
Technically, it's carryover that was never carried over.
So that's what it should say. It's coming from carryover. That's where, what it should be saying.
But she just kept, Madam, it, the City Attorney said that we need to indicate where the money will be coming from. So will, where, where it will be coming from once we make the transfer? Since you were talking about doing a resolution after this or?
That's what I'm trying to figure. Why are we doing another resolution? If we're gonna purchase it, why are we doing another resolution? It should all be in this resolution.
So Ms. Devers, where, where is the money actually? So if I say the purchase shall be funded from the sums from the.
Fund balance.
From the fund balance. That's what I have. Okay. And then we go, in the 2025 budget?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. So, and can, is that, is that your motion, your amendment?
Most definitely.
Okay, so it's been.
Madam City Attorney, you got the, the motion to move the money from the, uh, street department's fund balance?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. So that's the motion. Can I get a second?
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, seconded to, um, amend item number 15 with the language we just heard, which Madam City Attorney has written down.
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion? Councilmember Mays?
How much money are we talking about?
It's on the bank account.
It's the same amount that you were saying.
What's the amount?
It's on you.
No, look at the people here. This ain't, this ain't no joke.
We've said, we've said it several times.
Y'all say the whole lot. They can't comprehend what, what the house.
Okay, so you said, what's the amount? Is there any further discussion?
So.
Councilmember Phil?
So once we pass this tonight, are we good to go or do we still?
We're good to go to make the purchase. Yes. Just to make the payment, we'll need to do the resolution, but we're good to make the purchase once we do this.
And I want to see the.
Okay. So it has been moved and, so I will entertain a motion to, um.
Uh, to, yeah, I move that we, uh.
Adopt as amended.
Adopt this as amended.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that item number 15 be adopted as amended. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those wishing to vote for item 15 as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Agenda number 16, a resolution indicating balance of revenue generated from the 2017 5.8 cents sales and use tax.
Whereas the 2017 5.8 cents sales and use tax sunset on September 30th, 2025. The remaining revenue generated from the tax is approximately $860,000. And whereas the anticipated cost to complete the GoCard project is $1.4 million as reported by the Urban Renewal Agency and the Go4PineBluff. And whereas Go4PineBluff will commit $1.2 million of its private funds to complete the project. And whereas the city of Pine Bluff has agreed to allocate the balance of the 2017 sales tax revenue as follows. Number one, 200, up to $200,000 toward the construction cost of the GoCard project. Two, up to $200,000 toward furnishings, fixtures and equipment. Three, the balance of the revenue to be used for operation expenses for the Simmons Bank Park and the GoCard track. And whereas the city of Pine Bluff will not transfer any funds associated with the allocations. The city of Pine Bluff will directly pay invoices, uh, identified herein. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the main, the remaining revenue generated from the 2017 5.8 cents sales tax, sales and use tax is approximately $860,000. The city of Pine Bluff is committed to allocate the balance of the sales revenue, sales tax revenue as follows. 200,000, up to $200,000 toward the construction cost, $200,000 toward furnishings, fixtures and equipment, and the balance of the revenue to be used for the operation expenses for Simmons Bank Park and the GoCard track.
Move adoption.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that item number 16 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Agenda number 17, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to reala, to reallocate funds within the code enforcement department.
Whereas consistent with ordinance number 6849, an adjustment to the municipal budget must be made by ordinance or resolution depending upon the form of adoption. And whereas the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by resolution number 4849, and whereas an adjustment and change to the budget is needed as described and detailed in the attached budget adjustment for the purpose of reallocating funds within the budget for the code enforcement department as explained in the request. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget adjustment having been examined is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed in the attachment are incorporated herein as is fully set forth word for word and number for number. Section two, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachment. Section three, the finance department will ensure that the budget adjustment is implemented as amended.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that item number 17 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all of those wishing to vote for item number 17 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Well, that was one for the books, y'all. Okay. Next, we will read the announcements. Number one, November 21st, 2025, at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the Art Times Three Campus will host an evening of poetic expression with artworks. Presents Open My Poetry hosted by True Poet. Ages 16 and older are invited to share their spoken word, selections and original creations in an encouraging and inspiring environment, celebrating the art of poetry and storytelling. No registration is required. Participants can enter for a chance to win door prizes. Drinks and snacks will be available for purchase. Item two, join the final Christmas bazaar at Faith Community Church across from McDonald's on the Saturday before Thanksgiving. Register, register for free Walmart gift cards drawn hourly, but you have to be present to win. You'll find many handmade crafts, decorations, baked goods, candies assorted, frozen casseroles, jars of soup, door wreaths, table arrangements and oven towels. Since this is the last planned bazaar, there will be craft supplies on sale. Call 870-879-3360 for questions. Item three, join us Saturday, November 22nd, 2025, at 12:00 p.m. for a vibrant community market featuring foods, trucks, live music and free entry for shoppers. Whether you're here to discover unique products or you're a vendor ready to sell, this is the place to connect, shop and celebrate creativity. Chester Hines Community Center, Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Free admission for shoppers. Vendors must RSVP to reserve a space. Item four, It Was All a Dream invites viewers to step into a world where imagination and reality intertwine. Presented by the talented art students of Pine Bluff High School, this exhibit celebrates the surrealist tradition of exploring dreams, subconscious and unexpected combinations. Located at the art space on Main, Thursday, November 20th, 2025, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., free for all ages. Item four, Jonas, join us for our monthly Catfish Friday Blues and Soul Night, November 28th, 2025. We will feature Bonnie and Soul. Free live music, catfish dinners available for purchase from food trucks. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. Live music begins at 7:00 p.m. Item five, make some holiday memories this year. Plan on a trip to experience our Christmas lights. It is always an awe inspiring, awe inspiring, awe inspiring trip through Arkansas's largest drive-through holiday exhibition. Admission is free. Ark, Arkansas's largest drive-through holiday light exhibition has over 240 displays, many of which are animated. Pine Bluff's Regional Park is transformed into 1.3 miles of winter wonderland from mid-November through December. Admission is free. Community volunteers graciously accept donations at the end of the drive. Item six, the city of Pine Bluff is shaking things up this holiday season. Join us for the Mistletoe Magic Christmas Extravaganza on Saturday, December 6th, 2025. Festivities kickoff with the annual Christmas parade at 5:30 p.m., followed by the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, featuring local vendors, food and festive fun. Mr. and Mrs. Claus will also be in town, so bring the whole family for a magical evening filled with holiday cheer. The deadline for parade applicants is November 28th, 2025. For more information, please call Martavius Proctor at 870-730-2004. Item seven, the city of Pine Bluff is asking all residents who still have waste management bins to contact the mayor's office. We will refer you to the appropriate source as well as document and ensure that we can complete this transaction and this transfer. Please provide your address and contact information, and we will coordinate with waste management to have those bins collected. If you have questions regarding card services such as your pickup day or general inquiries, please contact cards at 870-399-7463 And finally, we are asking residents in all four wards, as well as at Sea Ark and UAPB, to join us in a conversation about how to revive the bluff regarding the One Cent Revitalization and Economic Development Sales Tax Town Hall Meeting Series. The first meeting will occur for Ward one on Tuesday, November 18th, 16:00 p.m. That's tomorrow evening at New St. Hurricane Baptist Church in the Fellowship Hall at 3319 South Ohio, Ohio, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Ward one. Wednesday at UAPB, 12:00 noon, University of Arkansas, Pine Bluff, in the S.J. Parker 1890 Extension Complex, 2101 Oliver Road. Wednesday evening in Ward two at Sea Ark in the Reliance Bank Athletic Center, 6808 Hazel Street. Again, that's November 19th at 6:00 p.m. On Thursday, the 20th, at 12:00 noon at Sea Ark and Founder's Hall at a, um. What? Did I say? Okay, at 12:00 p.m. at Sea Ark on Thursday, November 20th. And that same evening, at 6:00 p.m. in Ward three, a town hall meeting will be held at Edgewood Elementary School at 4100 West 32nd Avenue. And finally, on Monday, November 24th, at 6:00 p.m., the final ward meetings, town hall meetings will be held in Ward four at the Wilma Anderson Center at 4701 Dollar Way Road. And we will not have any public comments following adjournment. And I will, uh, I'm waiting for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, make a motion to adjourn.
It's been, motion has been made and seconded to adjourn with no objections. We are adjourned. Thank you, council. Thank you, residents.